I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 3. It's a regular meeting. We have a forum. I'd like to remind people to turn off their cell phones. And I'd like for anybody who is planning on speaking before the commission today to stand up and raise your hand. I affirm that what I say today is the best of my ability of the truth.
I do too.
Thank you. First, order of business is case number 0813, which is Diversified Properties. Their Madison Heights project. This is a preliminary approval for PUD of Land Unit Development. Jim, can you come up? And Paul, you might as well come up, too. You might as well just stay there.
Just to get everybody up to speed, this is a preliminary hearing. Diversified Properties are seeking a preliminary approval to continue on with their planning for the Madison Heights project. Preliminary hearing would then, from that point, they would continue working and then come back to the Planning Commission to give a final plan review, seeking final approval of their PUD project. And then from there, that would have a recommendation up to City Council, who would ultimately vote on this as well. There's been, I think most of you, I assume everybody's familiar with this project. I met with Diversified on November 24. We had a meeting about this. They have made a few changes that should be noted. Previously, this was going to be a six-unit, six residential units. They're adding a seventh unit on top of the existing garage, which lies behind the flower shop. So they would put, I believe it's a single bedroom, one unit, one unit up there, two-bedroom. And they are reconfiguring the unit which is farthest east, on the furthest right-hand side of your document. As far as I'm aware, those are the only changes that have been made.
When, why did you reconfigure the last unit to the, you've reconfigured this one?
Do you want to address that?
It was just a design issue. It's essentially the same, it's essentially the same unit, the same square footage, same amenities. It's just sited differently for better exposure, better view. It just works better with the other four units. It's really, it's almost not a change. It's so similar.
Okay. And could you, the garage, where would the parking be? It's not really...
The garage currently has three, there are three garage openings in the existing building.
Okay, so that would continue being a garage with parking underneath it?
Absolutely. Yeah, as a matter of fact, what will probably take place, which will be evident on the final plat, will be two garage doors, and the third will probably be incorporated into that residence, that space.
An entry way up or...
Yeah, yeah. But there'll be two parking, covered parking spots that exist in that building right now.
Okay, great. So I open up to questions from the commission? Questions? Concerns?
So how tall is the, you expect this garage residence to be? You're gonna have one floor, two floors?
One floor.
One floor. One down, one up?
Yeah, it's basically, it's just one story above the existing one. Here, I'll just show you the proposed...
That's preliminary. Preliminary. Everything's preliminary right now. I understand.
Gives you a sense of what will happen to that space. And it really evolved as, you know, it's one full story above with a roof. Those two garages exist. This is where the existing garage will be eliminated. This is the proposed floor plan at this point.
And this, you said it's one bedroom? One bedroom, one down?
This, yes, this spot here, which will probably be incorporated into this space, this could be bedroom, bedroom, and this is a den.
Okay.
Okay? But this is, this is as far as we got with it, but at least it gives you a sense of what's happening. Okay?
Okay.
Do you need to look at this?
Bruce, there's still three units in each one of the, I guess, row of five houses?
Three bedrooms?
Yeah. Or three bedrooms, or is it three condo units? Or are they single-family now?
They're all, everything is single-family. Everything is separated. And those are all designed as two-bedroom units. There is a basement area that may be, that could have a third bedroom.
Okay.
That is, that'll have plumbing down there for a bathroom. That could evolve into, you know, dependent upon the end user's need. That could turn out to be a media room, or a workout room, or a family room. Or it could be a bedroom. Could be a guest suite down there if people want that.
Okay. Paul?
No, I think that they addressed the issues that I had with the access in the driveway. It's a matter of record now, so.
Okay. Sorry?
I have no further questions for preliminary.
For preliminary? Yes, I think that you have done a great job doing all your homework way up front. I think it's interesting how this whole project has evolved, you know, I think that...
Yeah, we do, too. Wait a few more weeks, it'll probably evolve into something else.
So, and also, I think, you know, it's a great, it's a great example of infill. You know, I'm personally, you know, I'm a fan of infill, so. I have no other questions. I guess the next process, part of the process would be to finalize everything into the plat and...
I presume to accept the preliminary plan.
Okay. We have a...
A second.
Okay, the second. All in favor to accept the plan? Preliminary?
More discussion first?
Any more discussion? All right. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. So Paul has all the ins and outs of all the, he's our point person.
Next level. Okay, we'll grab this plan.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you. You all have copies of the section...
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Next on our agenda is communications. We have a project for Southeastern Legal Services, which is at 964 East State Street. It's a Title 41 preliminary discussion. Dave Reeser? Come on up. Come on down.
Come on down.
Great.
And we have, but Paul got these this morning.
Okay, I do have sort of highlight, show.
Oh, it's in color, too.
Yeah. Shows the state of the addition, little slashed area, and it shows the new park, and there are needs and downs and so on. And there also is a neck sheet, which is just a more detailed plan of this little addition.
Okay, great. Paul, do you want to give some history on this?
Sure. There are two things going on with that site relating to Title 41. There is an existing home on there. It is a residential unit. They are going to be converting it into office space, which is a permitted use in that district for that type of home, for that type of building. It is a change of use, though. Title 41 has several different requirements when Title 41 comes in. They met two of them, the first being that it's a change of use, and the second being that it is an addition of more than five parking spaces. They are putting on, in addition to the property, to the building as well, which is, I believe, 23% of the floor space. Title 41 requires, always requires a review if it's more than 25%. So that is, that is part of the review now, but not, that's not why they're here right now. We have had some feedback already from our fire and police about this site, very minimal issues on their part. Chief Mayor said he was, just wanted to remind them and encourage them to have good lighting for the parking lot, especially in the evening. And Chief Troxell from the fire department is only requesting, or requiring that there always be maintained 12 feet of clearance on the entire driveway from side to side and up, to make sure that a fire truck can get up there. So there would be some, likely some trimming going on. We will get them in front of the tree commission next week. I cannot imagine there'll be any issues because there is, it is a larger lot, and there are, I would guess, at least 100 trees on site. So there should be absolutely no problems with tree commission.
Questions?
Paul, are there any issues in terms of slip-prone air soils, or has that been looked at, or that will be looked at?
It will be looked at. It is on a hillside. If there's any, there may be two issues with that. One would be with the parking lot. However, it looks like they're putting it in, is it concrete or is it asphalt?
Concrete.
It'll be concrete, which I was told by our co-director that the concrete is, should be sufficient, so we don't have to worry about the parking lot. As far as the house itself, it's, I can't imagine it'll be any more slip-prone than it was before. So we do have stability there. And the cut, it's a cut that's been there for a while, so.
Okay, and I assume the improvements have to do with disabilities accessibility, or not at all, or someone?
Yes, we're making the thing fully accessible.
Okay, that's my figure.
It's the major thing. And of course, parking, because it's an office and would require parking greater in number than a residence would.
Will they have to go in front of the Disabilities Commission?
I don't believe they'd have to go in front of the Disabilities Commission, as long as they are following ADA compliance at the state level. But I am not completely sure on that.
Okay.
Wouldn't mind it.
If it's a business, it's just, it's a different, you know, a whole different ballgame with a business. I don't know, when they meet? They meet once a month?
Once a month, yeah. And it wouldn't mind just to shoot a fire and see what they think. But I don't think it's a requirement, as you said.
We can show them the plans, if that would please the Planning Commission. I can certainly share the plans with the Disabilities Commission. The only other concern that came out is there is a, is it a shed or a garage that's been moved?
There is an existing, one of these prefabricated things that you buy at Lowe's or someplace like that, that was sitting on the property. We moved it to make room for the parking area. It was the owner's intent to keep this as just a useful utility building, but it's of no urgency that it be kept. If, you know, if that was a huge issue, it could be demolished and thrown away or something.
I think, I think the only concern when we checked the site was that it's, currently it's a rather large prefabricated shed, and it is sitting to the immediate east or to the immediate right of the parking lot, the new parking lot. And it's up on just cinder blocks, basically. And it does look like it could easily, if something should happen or if the soil should shift, it may slide down. It would probably be caught by large trees. But if it were to continue to slide down, it may end up on the Taco Bell property. So I think the basic recommendation would be, if that's going to be kept, is that it have some sort of better security or foundation on it.
Questions?
So the map that you gave us here, it's not really delineated in there, is it? This potential...
Yeah, the map just shows that it's moved, but doesn't show where it's moved on the site.
I think the site plan of this...
Oh, sorry.
I see it's...
Right here.
Yeah. Okay, it'll end up there. Okay. Okay, no big deal, I guess.
Paul, I wanted to get clarification regarding the fire, which was good news. But did he not state in the previous staff meeting that a hydrant might be required there?
He's not going to require it.
Okay.
Actually, he might have been talking about the Madison one. Was he talking about that?
Okay.
Okay.
Also on the map, it says that there's existing concrete pavement and also existing gravel.
Yes.
Are you gonna keep it that way, or is there plans to pave it, or is that up to...
The immediate budget just allows for maintaining it the way it is. There's an existing initial concrete driveway, which is for the steeper part of the driveway. And then when the driveway levels out, it's in gravel, or washed stone.
Okay.
And then, of course, the new section, the parking and the turnaround and ADA parking and so on are all concrete.
Okay.
In the future, that might be paved.
Right.
Yes, just looking at this, what this is.
And in the parking lot and above the building, we are putting in new catch basins. We're going to route all that in pipe to the city storm sewer on East State Street at the bottom hill. So we're not just gonna dunk this water.
Dump it onto the next neighbor's site, yeah.
Other questions, Nick?
No, no.
Okay, Paul?
I just want to clarify the reason that Southeastern Legal Services is here today, kind of through them for a loop, because we met back in the summer regarding the purchase of this property and being able to turn this into the offices, and did not see any issues at that time, of course falling under the 25% modification. But it did kick in because of the change of use and the additional parking, so. And they're ready to proceed, is my understanding.
Eric?
No questions?
I would encourage that you guys try to be very, I know that David's very good about this, of building around trees and such. You know, I've gotten complaints from tree damage and stuff along East State Street. And I think people are ever more concerned, given what happened across the way. So that's a heads up.
Well, as you can see, it is wooded. The entire site is wooded. We're not taking down a single tree for this project. And there's really no room to plant trees, actually, because it's, you know, it's already trees.
Yep. Okay, great. If there's no other questions, move that, we, what do we do?
Ask the planner.
Planner. What's their next step?
We should move this from communications into a case.
Case.
I would recommend that we finalize everything and make sure that all the city departments are, have reviewed it. Once we have the reviews in, I've requested that they try to get them to me by this afternoon.
Okay.
We can then forward that to Southeast Legal and to Mr. Reeser.
Right.
And then we should be able to continue proceeding from there, unless there's any concerns from the Planning Commission. And then we can have another hearing.
After the tree commission?
Correct.
Which you're on the agenda for next week?
If they're not, they will be. I will take care of that.
Okay. They're always the hardest ones to get. So if everything follows through, then probably maybe the next meeting, we could bring it up, or the first meeting in January.
We really, I'd like to ask for any possible help we can get in expedited, because, of course, Title 41 is relatively new. The owner, nobody ever made any representations that we didn't have to do Title 41. But yet, because of the preliminary site review, and then subsequently my obtaining state permits, giving them to Chuck Miller, his saying that we would have a permit the next day, we feel it in some ways. Again, we understand completely that we should, you know, according to Title 41, we're required to be here. But it kind of came as a surprise, because nobody mentioned it. People did receive our drawings, our fees, our applications, you know, so we've got bulldozers waiting. We have the owner notifying their landlord that they're moving out, which means they have to move in somewhere.
Right.
So any, and, you know, hopefully, on a, you know, on a totally tree-covered site, you know, the issue of having to do a tree commission meeting is, I don't understand, but is part of the law.
Yep.
We could, if we can get responses back from the city administration, the city officials very soon. There's nothing that says we could not call a special session of the Planning Commission to issue an approval of Title 41?
Well, I see, I'm wondering, Paul, I mean, could you, could we grant the approval on condition that it checks out with the tree commission? So that as soon as the tree commission makes their decision, our decisions already been made, if they're fine with?
I'm just a touch hesitant until we can get the...
Everything in writing.
From the city, to make sure that we...
Well, I think it's just because, the only reason I was suggesting is just the scale of this thing. So...
It's small.
So minimal that, you know, these really shouldn't take long. It's almost as if you really shouldn't come to us until it's gone through the other commissions, in a way.
Well, we, the reason they're here today is to expedite it, because the next, the tree commission won't be meeting till next Thursday.
Right, understood.
Well, I would, I would either, I'd be more willing to have a meeting, when is the tree commission's meeting?
Next Thursday, December 11, I believe.
Okay. So, you know, either we can meet briefly on Friday, if everything goes well. Paul is not looking happy on that.
The mayor and I are slated to be out of town on that day.
Okay. So it's either the next Monday...
Or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday. I mean, it seems that Monday to Wednesday is not gonna give that much.
So Wednesday, December 17?
Seventeenth. At our next, that's our next meeting, too, so. And you will be a case.
Okay. We should have everything squared away by then.
Yeah, so.
And I understand, I mean, we're holding a copy of your final plan approval from the state.
Does that sound fine?
Sounds doable.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okey-dokey. Any other communications? That's not on the agenda. Report from the city planner?
If I may, I'll have to grab our zoning map.
That could be in the communication, if we missed it.
David, do you want these?
Where they can see it. Can you get those maps?
What angle will work for you guys? How about that?
Is there an easel?
Maybe the other camera over there.
You just wanna leave it up against the table, would be all right?
Yeah, okay.
You gotta leave it up against the table, and shoot it right here.
All right, this one?
It's fine.
Well, as the five of you know, we've been working on this, the updated city zoning map for some time now, with the expectation that we will be referring this to City Council on Monday.
You prefer I sit down by one of the mics, if possible.
As I said, this is the draft of the city zoning map. We have made a few changes. All the changes are minor, relating specifically to road, to road names. We have the zoning now, we do have it in place, we believe, as far as up-to-date, effective today. We want to get this, beginning through the process at City Council on Monday, with council issuing an approval to adopt, I believe it'll be a resolution or an ordinance, an ordinance to adopt the new city zoning map, which would become effective January 1, 2009. We will need approval from the Planning Commission first, though, just to make sure that the Planning Commission is...
On board?
On board with the new zoning map. It's not a new zoning map, meaning we didn't, we haven't rezoned the entire city. This is just updating the zoning maps that we've been working with the last 50 years or so, to make it into a GIS, so that it's, we can distribute it easier, and reflect any annexations and changes that have come over the last 15 or 20 years. And the existing zoning map, the official zoning map, is a very flimsy piece of, several pieces of paper now, that we have taped together.
What kind of public comments did we get?
We received very little public comments. We did have it on display at the public library. It is still on display at Code Enforcement. And we had it on display, it's on the first floor of City Hall, as well as at the council offices. The only comments that were noted, there were just a few questions that we had to double-check, whether some things were rezoned. There was a question about the area around the library, which we had checked, and we could not find any record that it ever had been rezoned from what it is on this map. There was a few small pieces that we had to adjust on the west side, along Central and Courier, where we had to modify it. And we did our research on that through council, council ordinances. And then the other ones were some issues with road names. East Union Street was marked on here, but West Union wasn't. And we were using, Ilgard had used the E911 address system for the labeling. We just caught a few errors on there. 682 is labeled Whites Mill Lane. At one point, at another point, it's labeled as West Union Street. So we've actually, Ilgard is now checking with E911 to make sure they're aware of those errors, too, so. And that was all the questions we had on it.
Okay. Comments? Questions?
So you need a motion from us to accept it right now, as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we hear a...
I like that motion, yes.
I'd like to have a second.
We have a second?
And part of the thing is, this has been, this is not really a change. It's to upgrade the old map that's been falling apart for 10 years.
It's just updating it, and so that we now have a new official zoning map on display, so that we don't have to use the old one. It reflects the annexations and any changes to zoning that has occurred over the last, I think the last time the current map was updated was probably about 15 years ago. And most of any changes on there have been done using a Sharpie marker, and some of the changes are in people's heads. So just putting it all on paper. We will be able to make changes to the city's GIS website, so that the official zoning map will now be on there as well. And they can use that as a layer.
Okay.
And one of the discussions I had with you is eventually try and make hard copies to sell for people who are interested in hard copies. And, but as I say, this is, this is an improvement. This is a start.
And we have the draft, we have a draft PDF on the city's website right now. So one of the options we can also do is just put a PDF of the official map on the city's website. And if people want to download it and print it on their own, they have that option.
Since we have this digitized, as it were, so any changes in the future will be easier to make and upgrade. I wonder if there's something that council can put in that ordinance that, for, you know, future changes?
As a warehouse?
We can add to that.
So that we don't need to go through this process to update it?
Yeah, it could be like a schedule, or something that once a year, changes are reflect, you know, I mean, it could be at the end of the year, with this sort of timing, that if there is any sort of rezoning or anything, that changes occurs, you know, in December of each year. And it's not just occurring at the time.
We can do that.
So it shall be updated at the end, and at the end of the calendar year, reflecting all changes during that calendar year?
I think so. I think it's just something that, you know, it's not gonna be 15 years anymore. But it's not gonna be, you're not gonna have to worry about it, you know?
Sure.
Every week.
And in theory, any zoning change has a process already with public hearings.
Exactly.
Everybody will be aware of the changes, but the idea is to have it reflected on the map, actually.
Right. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
So, we have a motion, do you want to amend your motion to include his-
Yeah, I'll amend it.
Note to council to include, I don't know if that would be a whereas, or-
Actually, we're just accepting it, they can put that in.
But we need to-
We'll probably take that.
We can recommend that to council.
We need to recommend that, that that process be incorporated into whatever they do. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. All those post? Great, thanks, Paul.
Well, I had, I had a few other things.
Okay.
Just have to grab my notebook. The, just as an update, I will be reviewing, I'll try to get done this afternoon, a review of the Mill Street apartment. They have provided us RBC, Jeff Woods' property, they talked with the planning commission two weeks ago. We have received packages from them, just has not been enough time to review it all. I do believe they'll have a completed Title 41 application package, which means that we should assign them a case number and try to get them, have it reviewed by the city administration again, and then we may be able to get them to the planning commission as a case for the next here, next meeting. So I should have that done by today or tomorrow morning. And I will notify the service safety director, and then we can contact city employees to have them review the, the plans that they've given to us, so. Also, we've, I've been working on substantial damage letters. We've recently, I think in the last month, we had two homes on the east side that caught fire. Those, both of those properties are in the floodplain, and were built prior to the flood insurance rate maps being issued back in 1983, which means that depending upon the amount of damage they have, if the homes, if the damage exceeds 50 percent of the building's value, that these properties, in order to be rebuilt, will have to be built up to current flood, flood standards, so. We are, I'm going to send those out this week. I'm not sure what we've done in the past relating to this, but it is something that we'll need to track, and that not only includes, it can be damaged from anything, whether it be flood, fire, wind, a car going through a house, you name it, and it could also, this can be kicked in by improvements done to a piece of real estate, too. So if you've done, improved your home by 50 percent of the building's value, that may, and you live in the floodplain, you would have to update the house to make it current with current flood standards. Yes.
Okay, so in theory, that, this is for the flood administrator, and the paper trail's gonna be where, if we have these documents in place?
Uh, I'll have them in my office.
Okay.
How would that work, Paul, on a building improvement? Would that be something that you would have to catch when someone is going for a city permit, or something? Because you would most likely want to inform them prior to the making the improvements that they're gonna have to-
Absolutely. Well, if you're doing home improvements, it would be caught. What we need to do is, what I'd like to do is, we'll have to do some sort of outreach to notify people that this is, is the case. If you're doing internal updates, that's one thing. If you're putting an addition onto your home- That would always be caught through the permitting process.
Okay.
What we, what I've done is, I just noticed in the, you hear it in the news or in the, in the newspaper, that there's been a fire, and I just asked the police chief upfront, what did, what was their estimate of the damage, just their armchair quarterback guess, based upon the, their experience that evening.
Okay.
And then I'll just send out a letter requesting that the owners provide documentation of what they claimed to their insurance agency, or what the, the insurance company estimate was, or, or we may ask for receipts and, and for documentation of the actual improvements that they're doing, so. To keep track of them.
Okay.
And if it's less than 50 percent, they can continue. They don't have to come up to current standards, so.
How, what type of current standards? Does that mean raising, if you have a house with a basement?
It may. It, it may include raising the property to get it one foot above, or to at least get it above the base, base flood elevation within the 100-year. It might include having to add flood vents into the basement, or into the garage, putting fill on it, things like that.
And how flexible are these requirements?
Not very.
Not very?
No. These are coming from on high, from FEMA.
Right. Well, they're FEMA, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just looking at people who live in older houses are going to have much more of a challenge.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, are we gonna produce like a brochure, or something?
We have, FEMA has, we, we, there's a series of documentation and brochures that are out there. We can get a stack of them and print them out, and distribute them out.
Yeah. Because I see that this is going to cause some people angst-
Right.
When if they, especially with the people who have had the fires, and one is, is a rental, the other one, if it's on Ohio, the fire that was on Ohio?
Correct.
Yeah.
I suspect that the one on Ohio won't-
No, it was mostly-
Meet that threshold of crossing 50 percent.
Yeah, it was the garage.
Yeah. But it did move into the home, and it's an attached garage, so. But I don't think that would, I, I don't think that one will be a problem. The one on Stimson may or may not, I think that one's close.
Yeah.
But that's, again, that's, that's not necessarily the most informed opinion, yet. What I'd like to do is, once we have the new flood insurance rate maps, that we're in the process with FEMA right now, once we have those rate maps officialized, we can then create GIS layers that show all of the homes that are in the floodplain, all the structures in the floodplain that were built prior to the 1983 floodplain maps being adopted by the city. And then we can send out a notice to, to all of those addresses, just letting them know that these are the, these are the requirements, if anything happens to your home, so that they are always aware of that, and at least we've notified them early, so that they're thinking about these, this issue, if they're just, if they want to do renovations to their home, or if they want to make an addition onto it, or if something should happen, that they're aware of, that they have a responsibility here.
But they're not gonna be responsible for past renovations? It's just from the time that the map is-
Correct.
Accepted?
Right.
Okay. Other questions?
And I'm aware that there are cities actually would yearly give out information saying you're in the floodplain as part of an education program. I, I've talked to cities along the Ohio River that do that, it's a matter of course, every year, saying, do you know you're in the floodplain, and therefore-
Right before flood season.
I hope they do, before then, a lot before then, but.
And that, and that's something I would be more than willing to, to work on, is to have a public meeting every year, or twice a year, just to notify people of that, or communicate it through several different channels, you know, it's a really, it's a grave matter, and so we should be focusing on that. A lot of this city is built in our 100-year floodplain, so it's important that people know that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Is there anything else, any questions?
Do we want to talk about, the planner brought to my attention, Title 41 states that the packages, they, you know, they do a number of packets, and one goes to the public library.
Right.
The public library brought back their packet, so we don't do this for what they consider private development. They did display our zoning map, things that they view, so I-
So we should recommend-
So we've got a little bit of a glitch there, is what we talked about.
But that, the, it's not for private development, because it's a requirement of the cities to have information put out for public?
Well, that, that was the initial response from the public library, so. I think that they could see themselves being inundated with, you know, John Smith's, you know, residential proposal development, and Jane Smith's, and-
Well, then they shouldn't have any of them, because they did it in the past for, like, the Stimson Avenue, you know, development, and things like that. So, I mean, either, they, maybe what we need to do is communicate more with them, because, I mean, this is a public, a public education.
Part of the process, I know what you're saying, but-
The thing is, is that I have gotten so much complaint from people through many of these processes, that the zoning code office is only open until, you know, whatever time, and if it's the fourth Thursday, it's this time, and I can't get down there, and, and the library makes so much sense, because it's open, and it's accessible for people. You know, it's a part of, of if we want an informed public. Where else could we put them? Could we put them at the community center? Have a, have a shelf in the room by where the seniors are?
Possibly.
No, I don't think anybody's gonna be walking off of these things. But we have a bookcase or something there, and we could put some other things, like the, you know, hard copy of, of the code, and some other things, so.
Maybe we should, maybe we should talk to the, the county library, and see what their line is, and if they want to, you know. The other thing would be to, well, we actually should relay this also to council in saying, this is, you know, this part of the code is not, is not working right now. At least give them feedback, that, you know, again, Title 41's a work in progress, so. That's the other aspect.
I would like to find some places fairly accessible to put this information. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's all.
For Paul?
One, why don't you take two minutes out and introduce our new code director, too? We'll put him on the spot. Come on, pull up a chair there. This is John Paskey, the new director of Code Enforcement. And this is the planning commission, and you'll be dealing with us off and on regularly, I imagine.
Welcome.
Be happy to sit here.
Does anybody have any questions for him? So we're not gonna put you on the spot.
Okay.
Thank you for attending, and I see they got, I think Messenger got a picture of you somehow. I saw you in a paper last-
Yes, they showed up four o'clock Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and the end of Friday, I guess, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and if there's anything you see that needs to be dealt with in terms of zoning code, or that we can, recover zoning code, or any, any portion of the code that we can look at, or forward to the council to change, let us know.
I will.
Just make it working, okay.
So, are you done with your, anything else?
I am.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda? Okay. Announcements and other business? Any other business? Our next meeting will be December 17th, 2008, 12:00 PM, which is Wednesday.
Yeah, and realize there's a discussion of a town hall meeting occurring January 29th?
Yes. January 29th, to put it on everybody's calendar, we're having a town hall meeting to have a update on the comprehensive plan, all the benches and indicators that the comprehensive plan advisory and review committee has been working on, whatever the name of that committee. And we will be having this meeting, and part of the meeting will be working, joining in working groups, identifying things where citizens would like citizens and businesses and, and groups to work towards improving the city, and working on steps that the comprehensive plan has identified to move the city forward in its vision, that's been worked out. There'll be more information about that, so, but put it on your calendars. It's at the community center, 6:30 to 8:30, January 29th. Any other business announcements?
We've given this Title 21-
Oh, that was for the PUD, the Madison, just so that people do mind. Okay. Minutes? Anybody have any corrections, conclusions for the minutes?
I move we accept the minutes?
Okay.
Second, ma'am.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
German?
I can actually move, move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.